Hey guys, welcome to a 30 minute study session on fixation with the lab girl. Thank you guys so much for joining me this morning or if you're on the east coast, thank you guys for joining me. For this 30 minute study session on fixation with me. The goal of this study session is to try to learn as much as we possibly can and break down. Fixation within 30 minutes, so. Once we actually get into the meat and potatoes of fixation, then. You know, hopefully we'll make 30 minutes, sometimes it may go over to 45 minutes, it just depends on. The quiz at the end, which we will have a pop quiz. And the goal of these study sessions with me is to help you guys break down your ASCP book even further. And just probably give you guys a different insight on how to study for the ASCP, just some things that I did. Back in the day whenever I was studying for the ASCP and I had to literally reteach myself this book and try to. Retain as much as I can for the test, so. Before we get started, I just want to thank everyone for watching or listening to part one fixation. You guys actually gave me great feedback and I'm super duper happy that you guys are using these study tools. You know, that way you can be successful in studying the ASCP, so let's go ahead and get down. To it and let's go ahead and pick up where we left off, I hope you guys brought your book, me, I'm using the. Frida Carson, third edition, I know the last time some of you guys use, were using, I think the fourth edition, let me know down in the chat. And hopefully you guys can sort of read along with me in your book. You know, because if I read something different, I'm not sure which edition that you guys may have, so let me know. You know, hey Shanika, I don't, I don't see that in my book or you know, I got you, but I'm actually going to start off with a. Pop quiz question too, so let me go ahead and type in the pop quiz question, so as you guys are entering the chat. Or entering the live, you guys can actually answer this one because it's going to be a throwback from last week. On some of the things that we studied and as a recap, last week we actually studied more of just. Coagulants, non-coagulants, additive, non-additive, just the basic as far as like fixation. You know formaldehyde, formalin, basically glutaldehyde, all the aldehyde groups. And now today we're going to get into more of the compound fixatives. Which some of these things may be added to formalin or we said also non-aqueous and aqueous, so if you guys remember. Those are like the main categories that I wanted you guys to take away from that video, just the basics of. Your, your basic fixations that were either. At that point, I think they were all aqueous and I think we're going to do non-aqueous today. And if it's a coagulant, if it's an additive, it's a non-additive, so those were the main basic things that. I know is really important for you guys to know as a part of your fixation part on the ASCP. So for a throwback question, let me go ahead and give you guys a throwback question and you guys can answer it in the chat right now. Uh, let's see here. Okay, so a throwback question is the permissible exposure limit, P E L for formaldehyde is currently. 0.5 parts per million or P P M. B 0.75 P P M or C 1.0 P P M. The P E L permissible exposure limit for formaldehyde is currently, and I gave you guys a hint on how to remember that. So the options are 0.5 P P M, 0.75 P P M or 1.0 P P M. And let me type that in the chat, so you guys can answer that as you're coming in, so I'm just going to put. P E L exposure limit. P O S, if you guys can hear me, just let me know in the chat, just to make sure that you guys can hear me, okay? And say hi as you're coming into the chat. Exposure limit. Missable. Okay, so you guys can answer your first pop quiz question in the chat. Okay, so let's go ahead and get into part two. Of fixation. Okay, so let's just do a recap real quick of what I probably told you guys to study on your own. And that was, let's pick up where we left off, if you guys got third edition book is, you know, like me. Is actually your fixation chapter and that's page 12. So if you don't have the same book as, as I do, then go ahead and go to your fixation chapter and then. I'm just going to run down these fixatives real quick. So what I know that you guys can make a flash card on or some type of study card. Will be of course on all your formalins and the first one is 10% aqueous formalin. And these can be used as well as formalin, that's a flash card. This also may produce formalin pigment. Because it has formaldehyde included during fixation, also the next one is the 10% formalin saline. This one also may produce formalin pigment and these are just things that can be used. As well as formalin, calcium formalin has formaldehyde, calcium chloride, distilled water. Is says that this solution is recommended especially for the fixation and preservation of phospholipids in tissue. So I do know that they have appeared on the ASCP, so for calcium formalin. And they ask you, you know, can it preserve, well, what, you know, what is good for preservation for? Make sure you put on your flash card phospholipids in tissue. Another one is formalin ammonium bromide. And this solution is recommended for tissue specimens of the central nervous system. Especially when the casual astrocyte procedure is to be performed, this solution is very acidic, lysis red blood cells and causes nuclei to give a direct positive shift reaction due to fugling hydrolysis during fixation. So for formally ammonium bromide and you can put this underneath your, your formalin or formaldehyde flash cards. Just some other ones that can be used during fixation, but the key ones definitely is the calcium formalin. For phospholipids in tissue, the formalin ammonium bromide for casual astrocytes. And that lises red blood cells. Also to the 10% neutralized formalin is formaldehyde, DI water. Calcium or magnesium carbonate, if you look at your, the solutions that are in each of these formalin. Formaldehyde, then it adds, you know, you add the water, then it makes it actually formalin, so for. The formalin saline, the sodium chloride added to distilled water makes it the 10% formalin saline. And you could tell that all these have distilled water added to them and then the 10% neutralized formalin. Although this has been used widely as a fixative, it is not recommended because the solution becomes, becomes acidic after withdrawal from storage bottle. Also to the 10% neutral buffer formalin, a good thing to remember. About what's, you know, in the breakdown of the solution, which makes it working solution. Formaldehyde, of course, distilled water, but in this one, you want to remember the sodium phosphate mono, mono basic. And the sodium phosphate diobasic. This solution is most widely used solution for routine formalin fixation. It has a pH of approximately 6.8 and is hypertonic and the buffer icon presents. So definitely remember that 10% neutral buffalo has sodium phosphate mono and sodium phosphate diobasic. The modified melanic formalin. Has formaldehyde, DI water, sodium phosphate mono basic and sodium hydro, hydro side. And. The alcoholic formula, you want to remember that because this one has formaldehyde and this one has alcohol in it, absolute alcohol. So that's the, that's, that's why it's called alcoholic formula. And you want to make sure in your flash card that you put it as useful as a fixative on the tissue processes because. In addition to fixation, the dehydration process has also begun, so that's what the alcoholic formula. Okay, and just like your pop quiz question. Disposal employees to formaldehyde must be monitored for an eight hour period with the P E L currently set at, and let me see if you guys answered the question. Hey Kiana, hey JT, thank you guys for joining. Okay, so you guys, the answer is the 0.75 for the, for the P E L. So that was your throwback question, 0.75. Okay, so those are the things I just wanted you guys to read before we even started, you know, the second half of fixation because. They can go along with your formalin and your formaldehydes. And just the different ones that can be used in place of or can be used as well as formula. Okay, now today, we are going to get into. More fixatives and compound and combined fixes. So today we'll be talking about B5. Buwan, mercury chloride, oxmium, testosterone, picoric acid, potassium dichromate. Zinc salts and some other fixes that we can fit in today. Alright, so let's go ahead and start with, let's pick up with mercury chloride. And if you notice in your book that. We don't start to break things down as far as like what do you need to remember that's in your fixes until we get to these compound or combined fixes, which means that. They're going to be added to some of these other fixes, like you may have B5 that has mercury chloride in it. So that's what makes them the, the compound or combined fixes, because now we're going to be adding things together. So let's go ahead and just focus on fixatives that can just be used alone, okay? So for mercury chloride, if you want to go ahead and make you some flash cards, let's go ahead and get into some things that you can. Remember about mercury chloride. Okay, so one key point is mercury chloride is a coagulant. So we always want to make sure if we know what's a non-coagulant and a coagulant and what makes it non-coagulant and coagulant, so that's. How you can remember, so we know mercury chloride is a coagulant. And. Let's go ahead and read a couple of things about mercury chloride. Mercury chloride can also be used for bone marrow. And lymph nodes, which we'll get into whenever we get into another combined fixative that fixes bone marrow. And lymph nodes, but you can, right now you can put mercury chloride is a coagulant, can be used for bone marrow specimens. And because it is, I, because it's a mercury, then we know it's a mercury pigment. So I just posted on my community tab and on my Instagram story at the lab girl circle. I gave you guys a chart and this chart says list the three pigments. It's only been maybe 30, 45 minutes, but a few of, a few, a few people have put, when I posted a picture. And I asked them about the pigments, one of the answers or one of the, the choices were. Or the choices were mercury pigment. I think I put picoric acid and then I put. I forgot what else, I could have put acidic acid, but I want you guys to remember there are three pigments that can happen. During fixation, so right, number one was a formalin pigment, which we talk about, which we talked about before. And the second pigment right now that we're speaking about is the mercury pigment that can happen during fixation. So if you look at the chart and I posted a chart on my community tab. The main things I want you guys to remember is for the pigments. Can the pigments be, can, can the pigment happen, can it be prevented and can it be treated? So we've already talked about formalin pigment and now for your second pigment is going to be mercury. So a fixation pigment produced by mercury is one that cannot be prevented, but can be removed. So unless the pigment is removed, it appears as either a crystalline or brown precipitate line on top of the stained sections. Like formalin pigment, mercury pigment will also polarize light. So in order to remove mercury pigment, you want to treat it with iodine followed by sodium thioc sulfate. The iodine oxidizes mercury to mercury iodide, which is soluble and the sodium thioc sulfate removes the excess iodine or iodide from the section. So during fixation. Mercury pigment can occur. But it cannot be prevented, but it can be removed. With formalin pigment, it can be prevented and it can be removed. I know it can get a little tricky, but just remember on your flash card, what are the three pigments that can happen during fixation? So we've already talked about two, formalin pigment preventable, yes, removable, yes. How do you remove it saturated alcoholic picoric acid? Mercury pigment, is it preventable? No, is it removable? Yes. And, and how can you remove it? Iodine followed by sodium thioc sulfate. So think of, if you having some trouble trying to remember these things, I think what I probably did was think of like mercury as being like a. You know how the pigment looks kind of brown or like a crystalline, like brown pigment, so just think of maybe iodine. If you've ever seen iodine, then that's actually a brown color, so think of mercury and think of iodine followed by sodium thioc sulfate and sodium thioc, 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 thioc sulfate, sorry guys. Is used to remove excess. Is used to remove the excess mercury, just like whenever you are doing. A Bilchowski, you'll use sodium thioc sulfate to remove the extra silver. So if you guys have never done a Bilchowski by hand, once you know it's stained in the silver. And the, the ammonium, then basically we. Stain it with that and then we'll put the developer that helps develop it and then we use the. The sodium thioc sulfate to actually remove the excess silver and once we get into nerve chapter. And you know, you start to see the breakdown of the Bilchowski, you'll see sodium thioc sulfate will be used in that stain. So a lot of these things you, you never really see if you don't do these things manually, so that's the reason why. It's actually a good thing if you work in a lab and I know we have a lot of machines, but it's a good thing too, if you can ever experience doing more manual staining because. Once you start to, in school, I know you guys probably do a lot of manual staining, so it helps you to really see exactly what things do, you know, to the tissue, so. Those are your two pigments so far, formula and mercury, so make sure we got that down. Also too with your fixatives, make sure that you are knowing how to store your fixatives because things like that may be on the ASCP as well, I just don't go over it. But just make sure you know, you know, if it's toxic, if it's considered carcinogenic, you know, what it would do to your mucous membranes. Storage wise, those are things that are really, really important and I just may not go over that, but just know to make sure that you just know those things just in case. Okay, so the next fixative is osmium, testosterone, it is a non-coagulant. And normally this solution is used in EM. And if you remember, something rings a bell with EM, last week we talked about glutaldehyde, how tissue very thin. Sections are fixed in glutaldehyde and then now if we talk about osmium, that is also used in EM as well. You don't necessarily have to work in EM to know this, but just try to put those two together, so wherever your glutaldehyde flash card is. You can possibly, if you want, make a section with it that says osmium. That is a non-coagulant. And is used in EM as well. And there's a key sentence in your book that says. Its primary use is in the fixation of specimens in electron microscopy. Even though specimens for EM are fixed primary in the aldehyde solution, they are post-fixed osmium to ensure preservation of lipids. So non-coagulant is used in EM, glutaldehyde is used in EM. And it fixes lipids, which means, or you can put fats, it fixes lipid, so that will be possibly a question on the ASCP. Osmium may also be used to fix small amount of fat so that the fat will, will be maintained in sections during paraffin processing. And just a key example, what I was just saying, osmium is a very expensive reagent that is very hazardous because it vapor, vaporizes readily. It must be used under a fume hood and the stream care must be exercised, a tissue specimen is to be minced after being in osmium solution. I've used osmium probably like twice and it was for nerve. And I was scared just being near it, is you have to take precaution, make sure you wear your P P E. Those are just little things I want to tell you guys, like is, is that serious whenever you're using it? You need to be underneath the fume hood, you need to be very careful that you're disposing of it correctly. It is that serious whenever you use the osmium, so just know that, be careful. So we got mercury chloride, we got osmium, the next one is picoric acid. Now picoric acid is a yellow color, that's going to be important to know. It's a coagulant, so that's, that's in your coagulant group. Picoric acid is unique. That it's the only substance used in histo, both as a fixative ingredient and as a stain. Picker acid is a coagulant fixative and is very strong coagulant of nucleoproteins but leave DNA soluble. So what you can put for picoric acid is that is both a fixative and a stain, yellow color, it's a coagulant. Picker acid also shrinks tissue if it's, you know, for a lone storage. It is not for DNA or RNA and once we get into. Once we get into, let me get the chapter. Once we get into nuclear and cytoplasm staining and we start talking about. DNA and RNA, one of the trick questions may be, you know, is picoric acid used for DNA and RNA, definitely not. Any fixative containing picoric acid should be avoided if you're staining for DNA and RNA. It is not a fixative of lipids or carbohydrates. But recommended picoric acid is a constituent of fixes for glycogen, so it's good for glycogen. If I'm going too fast, you guys can let me know or the great thing is you can listen to it back on the replay. Make sure that you guys give this video a thumbs up as you enter the live, so YouTube knows that you guys are enjoying. The study sessions with me and so I can know that you guys are enjoying the study sessions with me. Okay, so for your picoric acid fixation. It fixes glycogen, is good for glycogen, not for DNA or RNA, it's a yellow color. It has a shrinking effect on the tissue and it's a coagulant. So that's one, two, three, four, that's five things right there that you can put on your picoric acid. Flash card. These are just some little things you don't have to really remember, okay, but this, this are just some main things about picoric acid. Picker acid will decalcify tissue containing small calcium deposits such as breast tissue. The only fixative reagent allowing greater final shrinkage than picoric acid is ethanol. Picoric, a key point, picoric acid must be washed out of tissue before processing. Pyric, a key point, pyric acid must be washed out of tissue before processing. Okay, so it says eventually the staining results will be extremely poor. Luna states that if pyric acid is not completely removed from the tissue, the results will be the eventual distortion of, or obliteration of almost all of cellular structures. So you wanna make sure that the pyric acid must be washed out of tissue before processing. And, let's just make sure that we know that normally with processing, unless you guys work in the gross, uh you know, grossing room or you guys um, are, you know, are going to be grossing tissue, then most of this is done during the grossing, uh during the fixation process. So by the time it actually gets over to your lab, or if it's just, you know, your histology lab, it normally is definitely probably right into formalin and then it goes to be processed. So that's your pyric acid. And just make sure you read all of, just make sure you read everything as far as like storage wise, safety wise. Those things are, you know, up to you guys to make sure that you, that you remember. Okay, the next fixative is potassium dichromate. Okay, so potassium dichromate is both a non-coagulant and a coagulant. So this is the reason why it's both. It says potassium dichromate is rarely used for, alone for fixation. It is a non-coagulant unless used in the acid solution, then it will act like chromic acid, which is a coagulant. Chromium will attach to some lipids rendering them insoluble, but it does not preserve lipids to the degree that osmium texturide does. I'm just gonna say osmium cuz I know I butchered texturide. So forgive me. So, we know osmium preserve lipids, preserve fats, right? It says potassium dichromate preserves mitochondria by rendering the lipid component of the membranes insoluble in alcohol, but it really, but it readily dissolves DNA. Potassium dichromate fixed tissue is soft, but shrinks more after processing for paraffin embedding than tissue fixing most of the fixatives. So, one thing about potassium dichromate, it has to be washed as well. If you noticing, some of these, most of these pig, or most of these fixative, after, you know, after fixation of it, it has to, you know, be washed. So, the main thing is chromate salts, chromate solutions can yield another of the fixation pigments. Ding ding ding, we have the third pigment. I'm gonna have to sound like a broken record because I want you guys to know the three pigments, okay? Fixation is that important. So, chromate solutions, chromatic pigments will be your third pigment that can happen during fixation. Okay, so it says this pigment formation is very easily prevented. However, once it has formed, it is considered insoluble by most, it says authors Baker Sheehan nineteen eighty. Okay, so they state that the pigment may be removed by treating the sections with one percent hydrochloric acid and seventy percent alcohol for thirty minutes. State that while the pigment cannot be removed completely, it is reduced by treating with an acidic alcohol solution. The pigment may be formed when the tissue is taken from a chromate containing solution directly into an alcoholic solution. Alcohol reduces the chromic compounds to insoluble chromium subsidized. Therefore, excess chromate should be removed from the tissue by prolonged washing with running water before processing. Okay? So, you can put on your flashcard either chromatic pigments, chromium pigments, chromate solutions, however you wanna word it. Is it preventable? The study book says, the question book says yes. The book says yes too. The pigment formation is very preventable. Is it removable? The answer is actually says questionable. But this one states that pigmas, pigments may be removed by treating the sections, but it may not be all the way reduced, but it's partially removed by acid alcohol. So those are your three pigments, formalin, mercury, and chromate. I think I used to put like chromate salts or zinc salts, but mer- formalin, mercury, and chromium. Those are all your three pigments, know how to remove them and how to prevent it. Is it preventable, yes or no? Uh, just some little things, um chromium is highly toxic by, both by in- um inhaling of the dust and by ingestion, is carcinogenic and corrosive to the skin and mucous membranes. They talk about the disposal of chromium, so you guys should, you know, just take a look at that. But, the main things that you know that it's the third pigment of the uh fixation pigment, top three. You're done with pigments, we're done with that. We won't touch that until a little bit later, before we leave the chapter. I'll quiz you guys on it again. Okay, let's go ahead and go to zinc salts. Okay, zinc salts. The main things about zinc salts really to know is, and you guys can read a little bit, a little bit of this like on your own. But, um, it says Russell proposed that, that an equimolar amount of zinc chloride could be substituted for mercure chloride in zinc resolution, zinc sulfate in combination with formaldehyde has been used for post fixation on the open type tissue processors by Mayo Clinic. Um, zinc salts, it says, today's zinc salts have found use not only in combination with formaldehyde for routine fixation, but as substitute for mercury in the B five solution commonly used for the fixation of lymph nodes and bone marrow tissues. See how they came back around again? B five, bone marrow, lymph node, fixation. And, let me just go back to zinc formalin. Oh, scratched it. Okay, so yeah, just go ahead and read um, you can read this on your own for the zinc salts. I don't really remember a whole bunch of zinc salt questions on the ASCP. Okay, let's go ahead and get into what I think is very important um fixatives for you to actually remember. Now we get into the meat and potatoes, now we're about to unpack things. Now we're about to get into the habit of remembering what is inside each fixative because later down the line, you guys, you will have to know in special stains, what is inside each reagent, not reagent, but what reagents are, are a part of that, that stain. So right now, you wanna start your memory building now because that way, you can have muscle memory when it comes to, you know, remember what reagents do what inside of special stains. That's a whole nother thing to unpack. So let's go ahead and get started with, what are some key things you can remember? What are some things you can like teach yourself? What are some um, some things that will help you trigger how to remember things inside of these fixatives? Okay, so these are compound and combined fixes. Other than formaldehyde, glutaraldehyde, glaxo, most of the fixative solutions are combined in such a way that the disadvantage of one component will be counterbalanced by an advantage or even a disadvantage of another. For example, the swelling caused by acidic acid is a disadvantage that can be counteracted by the shrinking effect of pi- uh pyric acid, a disadvantage if pyric acid is used alone. We just got finished talking about pyric acid, if it's used alone as a fixative, cuz remember it can be used as both. If it's used alone as a fixative, prolonging that, it'll shrink the, the tissue, right? So, let's go ahead and talk about B five. So, you got your, your flashcards, let's go ahead and make a B five flashcard. B five fixative, good for lymph nodes, bone marrow, and the stock solution of B five has mercure chloride. I hope you guys see it in your book. It has mercure chloride in it. We wanna make sure, if I have not expressed this enough, wanna make sure we're reading what's inside these stock solutions and what makes it a working solution. Okay? So, the stock solution of B five is mercure chloride, sodium acetate, and distilled water. The main thing in the, in the B five, if you see mercure chloride, that should, that should automatically say, okay, B five has mercure chloride in it. That means if fixation is happening with the B five solution, the tissue must be treated because guess what? It can have a mercure or mercury pigment if the, if the tissue isn't washed, uh if mercury pigment can form. These are things that, they can, these are things that it's important to remember. You don't have to see it every day to know it, but these are things that's gonna help you pass the ASCP. So in the B five solution, the stock solution has mercure chloride in it. You don't really have to remember if it has distilled water. I think the main thing, like a question would be is um, what is present in B five? So you, so you'll put, so there may have a question like um, mercure chloride, formaldehyde, or glacial acidic acid. So, B five has, think of mercury pigment, it has mercure chloride. Now to make that a working solution, make that stock a working solution, what's added to it is formaldehyde. So, that's the key thing you wanna know. To make a B five working, what's added to it? Formaldehyde. Okay, so the next one, or actually, let me just finish that one. B five. Excessive fixative does not need to be removed from the tissue by washing, but sections must be treated for removal of mercury pigment with the solution iodine followed by sodium thioc sulfate because of the mercury that's, that's present in the B five. Tissue cannot be, remain in the solution definitely after fixation, wet tissue must be placed in storage solution. So that's important to know. Next, we're gonna go Buon. I don't know how many times I've studied B five, Buon, Healy, Gender. These are, these are the ones you definitely wanna know. All right, we're coming up on forty-five minutes, so we're gonna actually try to uh get to the question soon. So Buon solution, let's look and see what's inside of Buon's. Pyric acid, formaldehyde, and acidic acid, glacial acidic acid. Okay, so for Buon, you wanna put this fixative license RBCs because of acidic acid content. This solution is excellent for tissue to be used in the trichrome staining for preserv- uh for, for preserving structures with soft delicate textures. The swelling effect of acidic acid is balanced with the shrinking effect of pyric acid. So remember, they do the opposite. So you, Buon has pyric acid and it has acidic acid. One is shrinking, one is cell, uh swelling, and if you notice, they all have formaldehyde. So the B five got formaldehyde to make it working, the Buon has formaldehyde. So those are three things, so you could put Buon solution, the three ingredients, a shrinking and swelling effect, which is pyric acid and acidic, uh glacial acidic acid and formaldehyde. You will also put that Buon, Buon solution licensed RBCs, that's important to know, but it's great for trichrome staining. And remember earlier I said about the Buon color, the yellow color? The yellow color must be removed by washing, traditionally done with fifty percent to seventy percent alcohol or seventy percent alcohol saturated with lithium carbonate. Buon fixative is excellent for use on biopsy specimens of the GI tract because the nuclei are much crisper and stained with NBF. Buon must be used as a routine fixative, but it cannot be used for preservation of tissue that must be examined ultra structurally with EM. So Buon is not good for EM, cuz what's good for EM? Glutaraldehyde and osmium. So, but Buon is not. Make sure you look at your picture, mine is I seventeen and I eighteen. Okay, so the next fixative is Gender solution. It has saturated, not alcohol, ninety-five percent alcohol saturated with pyric acid, formaldehyde, and glacial acidic acid. Now this is an alcoholic Buon solution. So, we got Buon's and then we have an alcoholic Buon solution because it has ninety-five percent alcohol in it. It still has formaldehyde and it still has glacial acidic acid. So they could ask you something like, what's the difference between Buon and Gender? They both got glacial acidic acid, they both got formaldehyde, but you can remember because you can put on your flashcard, this is an alcoholic Buon. So Gender has alcohol in it. Something, something stupid, but you can put Gender is an alcoholic. I don't know, put something that's gonna help you be like, okay, what's the difference? So Buon has pyric acid, Gender doesn't. So Gender has alcohol, um ninety-five percent alcohol saturated with pyric acid. As with Buon solution, the excess pyric acid should be removed by washing with eight percent alcohol. Okay, so the next fixative is Holland solution. I like to look at what's in the solution before I read it. So we got copper acetate, pyric acid, formaldehyde, acidic acid, distilled water. I normally don't pay too much attention to distilled water part, but I normally try to pay attention to the main ingredients. So, this is just if you're making it up from scratch, right? So this modification of Buon is stable and will decalcify small is stable and would decalcify small specimens of bone. It has been widely used as a fixative for biopsy specimens of the GI tract. Holland fixed tissue can be stained successfully with most special stains. The copper acetate present in the solution stabilizes RBC membranes and the granules of acinophils and endocrine cells so that the light, so that the lysis that occurs is less than seen with buon solution. Buon, lysis, RBCs. But it looks like Holland won't. It, like the, the license won't be as present. It, it occurs less. So the main thing you want to do with Holland is you want to know that this is a modification of buon. Let's go back real quick. I'd like to go back so you guys can stay on track with me. So buon is the main, right? Lysis, RBCs. It has, um, the shrinking and swelling effect of the acidic glacial, uh, glacial acidic acid and the picric acid and it's great for the GI. Gender is the alcoholic of buon, right? Cause the difference is it has alcohol in it. Saturated, it's saturated. The picric acid is saturated with, um, ninety-five percent alcohol. See how I just, how I just did those two? And then the third of that is Holland. This is a modification of buons. So that's, that's just three. If you want to put buon in its own category, that's exactly how I would do it. I just literally grouped that together with you guys on how to remember anything that has to do with buon and any questions that have to do with buon. Actual buon, lysis, RBCs. The alcoholic version of buon is going to be gender. Think of your, your gender, male, female. That's a good, you just have to think of things that's going to jog your memory, which, which is going to, um, put a little note beside your flash card. How can I remember gender, 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 gender? Gender, my gender. Alcohol, it's an alcoholic version of buons. And then you got Holland, which is a modification of buon. My, that word modification, very important because I know that would be on ASCP possibly for any one of you guys. For all nineteen hundred of you guys that may be watching me, it's one, a modification of buon is Holland. Okay, uh, let me see, we got left, zinker and hilly. We're going on fifty-three minutes, so I'm gonna go ahead and wrap this up. So what we'll do later is zinker and hilly. We'll do orth, we'll do zinc formalin. There's still a lot to do, you guys. Carnoy, we got the non-aqueous fixatives, which is all your alcohols. There's so many things to still cover, but I want you guys to now focus on the second half of your fixatives. Which we covered B five, buon, gender and Holland. So that's, that's four that you guys can focus on, remember, learn. We'll come, you know, we'll, we'll do some questions on it right now to go along with what I just, uh, studied with you guys and then we'll pick up with the remainder of the fixes. It's a lot. It is a lot. So whenever you guys get time, I know you guys probably have to come back and watch this or listen to this, but as much time as I'm putting into studying with you guys, that's how much time you need to put in for yourselves. Okay, let's go ahead and get to the study questions. And what I may do is I'm going to just give you guys the study questions and you can answer the study questions yourself. I won't go over the answers today. I'm just gonna give you guys the questions and then that way I can go ahead and wrap up the live. Okay, so your first question is zinc salts are added to some formalin fixatives to prevent the loss of cytoplasmic structures, provide superior nuclear detail or decrease tissue shrinkage. Zinc salts are added to some formalin fixatives to prevent the loss of cytoplasmic structures, provide superior, uh, suppo- provide superior nuclear detail or decrease tissue shrinkage. Fixatives containing chromate salts user require additional fixation, washing in water or washing in alcohol. Holland solution is a modification of which of the following? Carnoy, Zamboni or buon? Holland is a modification of which of the following? Carnoy, Zamboni or buon? All right, and next question is which of the following must be used under a hood because it readily vaporizes and will fix the nasal mucosa? Osmium, zinc or formaldehyde? Which of the following must be used under a fume hood because it readily vaporizes and will fix the nasal mucosa? Osmium, zinc or formaldehyde? Okay, that'd be all for today for the questions, you guys. I hope you guys enjoyed part two and fixation. Looks like we will have a part three. Maybe I'll go live a little bit later today. I do have, uh, some other appointments to do, so hopefully I'll have no time to go live later today. But if not, I really want you guys to take time on part two. Complete your flash cards. Try to put them together with part one flash cards, how they correlate, how they go together. And then answer these questions that I just left here on the live. You can put the answers down in the chat. Um, that'd be great and, you know, just make sure that you start studying fixation. So that way whenever we move on to the next couple of chapters, we won't come back to fifth section, uh, we won't come back to, um, fixation because I'm trying to cover it in depth for you guys. So I hope you guys enjoy this study session with the lab girl and I hope to see you guys in my next study session. Hope you guys have a great day. Bye.